All right. Shall we? I think we shall. Are you ready, Mark?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the January 22, 2019, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Pardini?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Sims and Mrs. Cameron?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, there is a motion to approve the January 7, 2019, minutes by Mrs. Pardini, a second by Mr. Erdl. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Next set portion of the meeting is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes for a total time allowed of 15. Is there anyone here who would like to address the city this evening? If so, please come up to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone because you are being recorded. Anyone? All right. Very good. So there will be no public comments this evening. Next is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. Yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. In celebration and in honor of Dr. King's memory, I invited children of all ages living in or attending school in University Heights to enter an essay contest in celebration of Martin Luther King Jr.'s 90th birthday. Participants were asked to respond to the question in 500 words or less, what do the words of Martin Luther King Jr. mean to you and how do they apply to the world today? The response was overwhelming, and we are still reading essays, and we hope to announce winners by the next city council meeting. Award winners will be invited to an awards presentation. One winner will be chosen per participating school. I'd like to take a few minutes now to talk about accessibility to these city council meetings by the public. At the beginning of last year, we began video recording meetings in order to allow the public to view our meetings even if they could not attend at the time that they were happening. And we will continue to do that. But another matter has arisen in the meantime. The accessibility of this room has long been problematic for those with mobility issues. For years, this was remedied by the presence of a chair lift. In recent months, that chair lift has become increasingly unreliable. We have put out to bid twice now the replacement of that lift with a new one. We have had a single bidder each time. Without getting into the merits of that bid here, even if we were to accept it, it would be some time before the new chair lift would be designed, fabricated, and installed. Furthermore, it is unclear at this time whether a new lift truly would remedy the overall problem. As responsible steward of the taxpayers' dollars, I have reservations of making the investment in this building that may be necessary to making it truly accessible when these facilities are already outdated in so many ways and still would be. Since the last council meeting, I took the opportunity to meet with Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board President Jody Serini. As the city and the school board continue to look for ways to work together, we have fashioned a solution for the time being. Effective with our next city council meeting on February 4, 2019, and until further notice, all regular meetings of the University Heights City Council will be held in the public meeting room at the CHUH Board of Education offices located at 2155 Miramar Boulevard in University Heights. The school district has generously allowed us to reserve that space for every regular meeting of the city council this calendar year. The only date change to the meeting schedule as of this time is the second meeting of February, the week of President's Day. Our city council meeting that week will be that Wednesday, February 20, at 7:00 p.m., as the meeting room was not available on Tuesday, the 19th, as the Board of Education has a regular meeting of their own that evening. I thank Jody Serini, the CHUH School Board, George Petcak, and everyone at the district offices who played a part in making this possible. I also want to thank Kelly Thomas and Mike Cook for their work in making this transition possible. This administration and this city council are committed to making our meetings accessible to the public regardless of mobility concerns, and we will hold our city council meetings in the accessible space at the Board of Education offices as we continue to look for a more permanent solution to the ongoing problem as it pertains to this particular meeting room. Thank you. This concludes my report. The first item on the agenda is the reappointment of Patty Carlisle to the University Heights Fair Housing Commission to a full three-year term. I'm pretty sure Ms. Carlisle's not here. I don't think I saw her come in, so I will tell you that I understood that she very likely could not be here this evening, so I did not expect her to be here. But Ms. Carlisle, as you may recall as a council, was appointed to the short remaining term in a staggered three-year board that was being reconstituted. We hadn't had a fair housing commission appointed for at least some period of time. So all three commission appointees had to be appointed, and we did it on staggered terms in order to effectuate the way that they are to be selected per by ordinance, which is a three-year term, one appointed every year. I stated at the May meeting last year when they were appointed that it was our intention, while putting Patty into the shortest term, that she would then most likely, barring some reason she would not be able to serve, be then reappointed to a full three-year term in January of this year. So basically, the Fair Housing Commission has not actually had to formally meet as of yet, although it does look like there may be occasion in the upcoming weeks where they may be meeting. So it is incumbent that we would want to make sure that we have the commission at full strength and ready to go, and it was always our intention to reappoint Ms. Carlisle, barring some circumstance where she would not be able to serve. So as we approved her before, unless there's any discussion we'd like to have, I would entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Patty Carlisle to the Fair Housing Commission for a full three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Wise, a second by Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in -- well, excuse me. Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Ms. Carlisle is hereby reappointed to the Fair Housing Commission. Next item on the agenda is the reappointment of Ann Mannan and Kelly Jablonsky to the City's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission for a term period of two years, beginning February 1, 2019. Judge Mannan and Ms. Jablonsky are both here, so I think we all do know them, but if you don't, there they are, and you have information in your packet. Judge Mannan practically needs no introduction, but she is a former common pleas judge here in Cogga County, a longtime resident of the city, a valuable member of the BZA, and has expressed an ongoing willingness to serve another term. Kelly Jablonsky is in the development line of work. She and her husband have a development business that they started together. She brings a perspective to the board that is valuable and at the same time may not otherwise be represented. And she too has expressed an ongoing willingness to serve on the BZA and has done so with distinction, and we're delighted to keep her on as well. When I say "we," I mean suggesting her for reappointment, so I'm hoping it's "we." That said, they're here if you have any questions for them or if you want to speak with them about anything related to the commission appointment. I would add that there is also a third seat that is available. There is a -- Linda Johnson resigned from the BZA due to other interests that she needed to pursue that were going to take up time and make it difficult for her to continue to serve in that capacity. I am looking at someone to appoint to that seat now. They're not on the agenda for this evening, but I expect they'll be on the next agenda. So for anybody wondering, had not forgotten -- yes, Mrs. Wise?
I just want to mention that I attend the BZA meetings on behalf of council, and I'm very glad that Kelly and Ann have decided to stay on.
Me too.
And I would just add to that, that both Judge Mannan and Ms. Jablonsky have provided quite a great deal of expertise to that board, and anyone who has attended those hearings would know that all the board members, but in particular Judge Mannan and Ms. Jablonsky, you know, very carefully consider the matters that are brought before them. So I would encourage council members to make the reappointment.
And I'd also like to echo those two points. I served on the BZA with those two ladies for a number of years, and you've been doing this for several years now, because I came off BZA, I think, what, 2016? So -- but they did a tremendous job in the years that I've served with them, and I'm thrilled that you're still interested in doing it and want to do another term, so I definitely would make the recommendation as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Judge Mannan and Ms. Jablonsky to the City's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission for the term period of two years, beginning February 1, 2019.
A second then.
Okay, there is a motion by Mr. Rock to confirm -- was it both Ann Mannan and Kelly Jablonsky, to -- each of them to a new term of two years, beginning February 1, 2019, with a second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion passes. So I do have oaths of offices here for Ann Mannan and Kelly Jablonsky, so if you'll join me up front.
(inaudible)
Yes. Very good. If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I pledge allegiance.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you both. (inaudible) All right. Okay. All right. Thank you both. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2019-01, Updating Chapter 14 of the Codified Ordinances by Enacting Sections 1424.11, entitled "Cancellation Fee," and 1424.12, entitled "No Charge Permit." This is on second reading. Mr. McReynolds, Mr. Grogan Myers, could one or both of you approach to speak on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council.
Thank you.
This is suggested to alleviate the number of cancellations that we have at the last minute, which kind of wastes, to put it simply, wastes our money. We provide service, and because of that, we have to make an appointment. Those inspectors, the car, any backup personnel that have to be there, cost money, especially if it's canceled at the last minute. In terms of the building side of this, we have sometimes -- we had an event not too long ago in which the fire department was there to witness a fire alarm test, a fire suppression test, rather, and it worked right. Now, a case like that, we have several fire personnel, trucks, we have building department personnel, our cars, and in that case, the fire department has a means to go ahead and provide a fine. And we're doing the same thing on the building side. We've made the fines equal. That is $100 apiece, and I don't know that that's out of line as far as building goes. I think that's right in line with what other cities would charge. This isn't something that we invoke steadily, but we have -- we would like to have the ability for people, especially who are crowded abusers.
If I could just clarify that point, that issue was raised at the last meeting, and I do want to make it clear that in terms of providing legal advice to the city, if we enact this ordinance, we, in effect, are going to be removing any sort of discretion of the building department in imposing the fee. We don't want to be picking and choosing who we impose the fee against. Either you're in violation of the ordinance and the fee would apply, or you're not. So I know that -- I believe it was Mr. Sims had asked that question the last time. We just can't be wishy-washy about who the ordinance applies to and who it doesn't. I just want to make that point clear to council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Mr. McReynolds, was there anything further?
No. Unless there's some questions.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have a question for Mr. McReynolds? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McReynolds, how many cancellations do you think we had in 2018 for inspections like this?
It's hard for me to answer that question directly without my clerical support at hand, but I would imagine it averages somewhere between two and four a month.
Okay. And is it -- is -- what's the -- is this for all inspections or a specific type of inspection?
Well, on the housing department's side, this would be for cancellation at the last minute, that is, less than 24 hours before the appointed time.
Sure. I'm trying to -- but what -- I'm trying to get at the cost of the underlying permit that we're talking about.
Oh, on the building side, it could be any number of different-sized permits. What it means is coming out for an inspection, and they might be ready at the time.
Sure, sure. Well, is the $100 penalty -- I'm -- I agree with you that it's something that we could address as a council and should address. I have no problem finding people, but if the -- if there's a permit that's less than $100, I think $100 is probably overshooting the fine amount. That's what I'm trying to understand, sort of.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. Even though, you know, in other cities as well as this one, we have that ability to charge a fine. I've never done that. It's nice to have it as a --
What's the cheapest permit that we have would be covered by this?
I would think $50, something in that range.
Okay. And the most expensive permit?
Well, that would -- depends on the cost of construction for commercial work, and that could run into the thousands.
But those are outliers, though, right?
Yes.
So for residential permits, we're talking about?
Couple hundred dollars, even for a large addition.
Okay.
We're talking a couple hundred dollars.
This would probably cover rental registration permit inspections as well?
Yes, yes, and that was really the impetus for this legislation, was because of the rentals. We have some good landlords and there's some problem landlords, and the problem landlords are the ones that are causing us needless expense by not showing up, and these are typically landlords who have problems in other areas as well.
Sure.
For example, they have maintenance problems. They may be looking at court.
So what percentage of the total amount of cancellations that we're talking about, two to four a month, that's 20 to 50, 25 to 50 a year?
Probably 10% or less.
Are?
Are cancellations per month. 10% of our appointments.
Of all the cancellations we're talking about, how many of them are the absentee landlords who you think may be the primary abusers of this?
Can you define absentee?
So you said possibly two to four a month, right?
Yes.
And I'm -- I understand you're --
I'll talk about the rental program, you know.
I understand you're ballparking the number of cancellations that we have.
Yes.
But of those cancellations, are all of them an absentee landlord, or is half of them an absentee landlord?
I know a percentage of them are local landlords, because they're the most vocal about, you know, this type of a --
Right. So how many of these are for rental registration inspections? Let's ask it that way. How many of the cancellations that we're talking about are for?
Oh, 90%.
Okay.
Yes. 90% of our cancellations are for rental inspections.
Got it. Okay.
And just say that part of this arose that since I became housing director last year, we've had, give or take a half dozen, probably erring on the side of more than half dozen no-shows, just straight up someone called, made the appointment, our inspector went out there, sat out there for 10 to 15 minutes as courtesy, and no one showed. And in those six or seven cases, those were rental properties. As far as absentee landlord, that I can't speak to. I have not gone that far into detail, but in some ways, I don't think that necessarily matters. If someone called and made the appointment, we would hope that you would at least do us the courtesy of giving us a call and saying, hey, I can't make it. We do have people who say, hey, I got stuck in traffic, I'm five minutes behind, and people show up. But this is specifically targeted at people like those six or seven cases that we've had, just in the rental program alone, since I became housing director, where the inspector goes out, takes 15, 20 minutes out of his day to sit there for an inspection that someone called for. You know, these aren't us just cold calling. These are inspections that people called for and then did not show up. I know it might be a little bit easier in the winter, when maybe things are not quite as busy, but in the spring and summer and the fall, when things, you know, grass abatement's stepping up, when you have point of sales kicking up as well. This has a serious cost to both other landlords and homeowners, who might be scheduling a point of sale, might be scheduling a rental inspection on the building side, have their contractor be standing there for a roughing for plumbing or electrical, and if they don't show up, that is a cost to the city and a cost to the residents for services we couldn't deliver to someone else.
I --
If I may mention a --
Sure.
Excuse me. There are cases, rare cases, where an emergency does arise, and in those cases, we've accepted that, and we haven't seen fit to charge a fine. One happened to me, where I went out to an inspection, nobody was there, I waited my 15 minutes left, and I was saying I was there, and found out later that they had to go to the hospital, it was an emergency. They didn't think to call us, because it happened that morning before the inspection. In a case like that, of course, that should be accepted.
Is there a current fine for skipping out on the inspection?
There's not. So currently, we have a reinspection fee, which is after two failed inspections, then you get charged a fee. But that is after, like I said, two failed inspections for, you know, failure to do work or believing it's done when it's really not, and knocking up to code things of that nature.
Not a no-show, though?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Which was part of the aim of this, and I understand your concern about, you know, is this perhaps too much, or, you know, kind of gauging that sense of cost. I did bear that in mind. In terms of the housing side things, on a point of sale for a single family, that's $150, so that's two-thirds the cost of a point of sale.
Right.
So I do -- I do understand.
Okay, thanks. And last question is, I think I'm comfortable with this, as long as the -- as when you apply for the inspection, that you get something from the building department to let you know, hey, look, this is the deal. You've got 24 hours, you're going to get charged $100.
Correct, yes, and the law directors provide guidance in terms of making sure that once we schedule an inspection, following up with something in writing, so that people are aware of the cancellation policy, particularly because it would be a new policy. And the practice has always been to just call over the phone and set up their appointments, and what we would then do is follow up in writing to make sure people are aware of the cancellation fee if you do not cancel more than 24 hours in advance.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Weisman. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. McReynolds or for Mr. Grogan Myers? Okay, very good. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we pass Ordinance 2019-01, Updating Chapter 14 of the Codified Ordinances by Enacting Sections 1424.11, entitled "Cancellation Fee," and 1424.12, entitled "No Charge Permit."
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mr. Weisman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdl. Any discussion on this motion? If there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Item D, Ordinance 2019-02, Adopting the Solid Waste Management Plan for the Cogga County Solid Waste Management District. This is on first reading. Council, you all have copies of the plan that's been distributed by Mrs. Thomas. There's quite a bit there to look at. They do make adjustments from time to time. They ask that the communities review and adopt this plan in order for this plan to be effectuated. The deadline is April 22, so we have a little time. There is time still to review and consider what is in the plan and to discuss it, and if there are questions, to take them up. I can tell you that Mr. Pecorni, next week, will be attending an information session on the plan, so he'll be learning more about it as well with respect to, you know, what may be conveyed that way that may not be as readily ascertainable from a plain reading of the documents. So the solid waste district is very interested in seeing all of the communities that it services consider and pass this document and adopt it, and that we do so timely. There is no way to extend the time period, as the time period is set by state law. We do have some time, however, so there may not be much to say about it other than that at this point, but if there is anything, certainly we would welcome some comments now. Okay. Well, if there are not, then we will all be looking at this further before the next meeting, and with a view toward taking it up again then. I don't know if -- I know Mr. Pecorni could not be here this evening, so there's nothing for him to add at this point either. I don't know if Mr. Tuni or anybody else had anything they wanted to say about it. I didn't think so, but just wanted to make sure. And we have had our first reading now of Ordinance 29 -- rather, 2019-02. Very good. Next item on the agenda is Item E, Ordinance 2019-03, Authorizing Supplemental Temporary Appropriations for Expenditures of Carryover 2018 Purchase Orders of the City of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2019. This is on emergency. I have some commentary on this from James Goff, our finance director. attending an information session on the plan, so he'll be learning more about it as well with respect to, you know, what may be conveyed that way that may not be as readily ascertainable from a plain reading of the documents. So the solid waste district is very interested in seeing all of the communities that it services considering past this document and adopt it, and that we do so timely. There is no way to extend the time period, as the time period is set by state law. We do have some time, however, so there may not be much to say about it other than that at this point, but if there is anything, certainly we would welcome some comments now. Well, if there are not, then we will all be looking at this further before the next meeting, and with a view toward taking it up again then. I don't know if, I know Mr. Pecorni could not be here this evening, so there's nothing for him to add at this point either. I don't know if Mr. Tuni or anybody else had anything they wanted to say about it. I didn't think so, but just wanted to make sure. And we have had our first reading now of ordinance 29, rather, 2019-02. Very good. Next item on the agenda is Item E, Ordinance 2019-03, authorizing supplemental temporary appropriations for expenditures of carryover 2018 purchase orders of the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2019. This is on emergency. I have some commentary on this from James Goff, our finance director, who writes that normally, purchase orders for a specific purchase are left open when rolling from one year to the next year, until the invoice associated with that purchase order is paid. Through this process, the funds needed for purchase orders need to be paid in the subsequent year, rather, the funds for purchase orders paid in the subsequent year do not need to be re-appropriated. Due to the change of accounting systems, all 2018 purchase orders are closed in the old eGov accounting system, and thus release the appropriations on the funds that would have been, that would have paid these 2018 purchase orders. In order to enter the 2018 purchase orders, which would normally carry over from 2018 to 2019 into the new VIP Fusion accounting system, the funds needed for the purchase orders need to be re-appropriated. Ordinance 2019-3 approves supplemental appropriations to the 2019 temporary appropriations for the purpose of re-appropriations of these funds for the 2018 carryover purchase orders. There are, there's a list of purchase orders for any questions about specific purchase orders, and the lists are the same, but they're sorted in three different orders. One's by purchase order number, by dollar amount, and by department, and then by vendor. I have these. I don't know if you sent these to everyone else. Do we have those?
Just was in the ordinance.
Yeah. We have a list of the-
You have a list in the ordinance? Not in the ordinance?
No, the numbers are there. They're not just-
Just the appropriations.
By fund number.
They're by fund number.
Yeah, aggregated.
Okay.
Not the list that you're talking about.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
There are two different-
Mrs. Cardy.
Thank you. The language is making me want to understand and clarify a little more, because I hear re-appropriations and then supplemental appropriations. So I know that there's a change in a reappropriation from what is being said, but this has, there are additional appropriations? That's what the supplemental means? Has money been added to the original appropriations, or have the original appropriations been reordered in terms of the amounts under certain accounts?
My understanding is that it's the latter, that this is not additional money that's being appropriated, but rather, this is being done because we are, we've, we're in the process of switching the accounting systems from eGov to VIP Fusion. And because we had to close out everything on eGov, that meant closing out the purchase orders, even though these are things that we are intending to follow through on, and if we weren't changing accounting systems, would simply remain open, and no action by the council would be necessary. The list that I have here is states strictly original purchase order amounts. There are no changes that I am aware of. If you do not have this list, I'm, you know, realizing now that I got this late this afternoon from our finance director, if you do not have it, we could take a moment to forward it to everybody, we could take a moment to print them out. I'm happy to do that if it seemed to be-
For my purposes, that's not relevant. That might be worthwhile in the future. I was just trying to look up the original temporary appropriations we passed and was not able to find that council agenda to see and to compare. Because again, I just want to know what I'm voting on.
Of course.
Either way, it's fine. I just want to know if we've added to the original temporary appropriations, and I'm not even sure you can.
No, I don't think you can.
I don't think you can. Can you, Law Director? I think once they're voted on before the end of the-
I think that's correct, but I'm not 100% sure. I do, yeah, I think that is correct.
Okay.
But you cannot add.
So he's just realigned appropriations for where he needs them, based on carryover POs from prior year?
Right.
It sounds like.
Yes. The intention is to, is to result in carryover POs when the POs were technically closed because of the change in accounting system. If we weren't changing accounting systems, we wouldn't be doing this. The POs would simply be open already, and we would be proceeding.
Okay. Well, since it's on emergency, as long as they are not additional, I would move to vote on emergency for ordinance 2019-03, authorizing supplemental temporary appropriations for expenditures of carryover 2018 purchase orders of the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2019.
And on emergency. Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Weis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdl. Any further discussion? I think it is clear also from the way the motion was presented, that the authorization here is not for additional amounts, but for just re-appropriating the amounts that were previously appropriated, and that-
She hadn't used supplemental.
Well, I think, I think the word supplemental was used here in-
That suggests-
Because we are under supplemental temporary appropriations at this point.
That's the terminology. Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Any further discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call a roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisman?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to hold executive session immediately following this regular session for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal and/or real estate matters. At this juncture, I'm not aware of any reason that we will need to go into an emergency, or rather, rather an executive session following this meeting. So unless somebody else has a matter that they are aware of, I would suggest that no motion is necessary at this time. Okay, very good. We will then go to the directors' reports. First is finance. And if I may continue from Mr. Goff's report, with respect to bank reconciliations for November 2018 and December 2018. Bank reconciliations for November and December 2018 have been submitted to City Council. The bank reconciliation and associated financial reports for December 2018 are interim reports since December 2018 has not yet been closed. Closure of December 2018 has been delayed by the implementation of the VIP accounting system and preparation of the draft 2019 permanent appropriations budget. The remaining 2018 imbalance of bank versus book will be resolved as part of the closure of December 2018. With respect to the implementation of VIP Fusion accounting and payroll system, the Finance Department has begun issuing purchase orders and payments through the VIP Fusion general ledger, and that is expected to begin this week.
Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Cardy.
Would you be willing to forward that to us, please?
Yes, yes. It's all part of the same document, so I'm happy to forward all of this to council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Director of Law?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I want to provide you with an update on one of the fair housing matters before the city. As you may recall, the Fair Housing Center filed a complaint with the city for review of certain violations of the fair housing ordinance relating to housing practices by a particular landlord that owns property throughout the city. In response to the complaint, the city received a lengthy position statement from the respondent landlord that raised a variety of defenses, including, number one, challenging the facts of the allegations, and specifically indicating that rental applicants were never turned away when they indicated they were recipients of housing vouchers, and number two, challenging the constitutionality of the city's ordinance as it relates to the city's prohibition on discrimination on the basis of, quote, "source of income," which is a term that's used in our ordinance. The respondent argued that the term "source of income" was not defined within the ordinance and was overly broad, leaving the respondent without proper notice as to what the prohibited conduct is. Procedurally, under codified ordinance 82011, after each party briefed the issues, the law director, excuse me, is permitted either to dismiss the case, or if he or she finds there are grounds for the complaint, to refer the matter to a conciliation hearing, which is the equivalent of a mediation. In this case, I referred the matter to a conciliation, and we set a conciliation date that was to take place later this week. However, the parties agreed over the phone to attempt to resolve the matter on a pre-hearing basis by utilizing the law director as an intermediary. During this process, the Fair Housing Center, who filed the complaint, was candid in admitting that it was looking only for prospective relief, namely, that the landlord wouldn't, you know, quote, "do it again." And to be fair, and for purposes of the record, I want to emphasize that the respondent's position is that they never engaged in the prohibited conduct in the first place, and that they had provided evidence to the city to corroborate that position. The Fair Housing Center also candidly suggested that it would consider withdrawing their complaint if the city would consider revising its ordinance to provide a precise definition of source of income, so that we could avoid any type of ambiguity or future challenge on this basis to the ordinance. I indicated verbally to the lawyer for the Fair Housing Center that I thought council would be willing to meet and consider such a change, but that I could make no guarantees. However, late last week, I received two emails from the Housing Center. The first email withdrew its complaint against the respondent landlord, and the second asked for a meeting with the mayor and any interested members of council to discuss possible modifications to the fair housing ordinance. Based on that request, my recommendation to the mayor and council is that you provide me with a few dates when people might be available, and that we arrange to have a meeting with representatives from the Fair Housing Center, so that we can consider certain modifications to our ordinance that would protect the city and provide clarity to all of the parties. I want to note that the Housing Center expressed both their appreciation and gratitude for the manner in which the city handled their complaint. I think this might be the first complaint the city has ever received under this ordinance. It certainly is the first complaint in a very long time, considering that we had a board that was not constituted. So we learned a few things, and I'm confident that we'll be able to smoothly handle future complaints. We do have a second complaint that was filed that we recently were able to verify, serve as a process for, and we are coordinating amongst the parties in that case to arrange for a conciliation hearing, which I anticipate will be in the next few weeks. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions for Mr. McConville? All right, very good. Public safety, police, Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight I'll be reporting on three items. First is a hiring update. Pertaining to our vacant administrative assistant position, we did hire a candidate, Margaret Bolzano. She will be starting her employment on February 5. And pertaining to vacant officer positions, background checks will continue to fill the two remaining positions. Second item to report on is related to our frontline electronic parking permission program. Right now, the parking permission parameters and online platforms for the links to be located are still being fine-tuned, but we expect this program to be rolled out and to go live by the end of next week. Final item to report on is relating to emergency management. On January 9, Fire Chief Perko and I had the opportunity to meet with Cuyahoga County Emergency Management Director Mark Christie and Operations Supervisor Brian Kloss. The purpose of this meeting was to enhance our familiarity with county-level resources and assistance as it relates to emergency management at the city level. We've also been looking at a program known as Ready Certified, which is a county-level emergency management standards-based certificate initiative, which is designed to help communities build emergency management programs with a focus on planning, operations, training, and exercises. Going forward, continued interaction with county emergency management representatives to further enhance our preparedness will be ongoing throughout the year. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Rogers? Okay, very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next, public safety, fire, Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight I want to report on training and development in the fire department. We've been training at 3950 Sillsby, the corner house, doing firefighter survival drills. Some of our guys have taken some of their spare time to build some props within the structure, and been doing some realistic training for survival. We've also been doing leadership training. This has been a regional approach from the Shaker Heights Fire Department, which was organized by the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. At the first of last week, we just started our first-ever acting officer program. So if a fire officer is unavailable to operate on the apparatus, then we can use our firefighters to act in their capacity, and they will have training to support them in that role. Fire Prevention Bureau is now up and running. We're going to have a CPR class held at the library this Thursday, first one this year, and then the next one will be April 25th, also at the library. And the links to sign up for that are on the city website. The Fire Prevention Bureau has also been updating all of its forms, looking at permits, like hot work in the city, and reviewing mobile food truck stuff. They're also looking at our ordinances on the books now, and looking to make maybe some recommendations that I think we could bring possibly to the safety committee to tie into some of the community risk reduction things we spoke about at the last meeting. Since the three weeks that they've been open, they've conducted a variety of different safety system tests, alarm acceptance tests, some site inspections and consultations, and about three dozen annual fire safety inspections in the community. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Chief Perko. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Perko? All right, very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Next is Service Department, and Mr. Pecorni could not be here this evening, but I do have a report which I will read now. The 2018-19 tree pruning and removal project being performed by the Parks Tree continues. Ashurst Road and Edgerton Road from Fairmont Boulevard to Hillbrook Road are complete. Work will continue next on Dysart Road and then Charney Road, also from Fairmont Boulevard to Hillbrook Road. The service director will be scheduling a public meeting with representatives of Parks Tree and our consulting arborist to discuss this project at 6:30 PM prior to our next council meeting on February 4. The yard waste collection. The service department continues to work on the disposal of leaves and brush collected during the past collection cycle. We hope to have all the debris removed from the service department yard and Kerwin yard by the end of this week. For the next two months, all yard waste must be bagged for collection. Curbside leaf collection will resume April 1st for the month of April. Snow and ice control. The service department staff works diligently to provide safe roads for the motoring public. We would like to remind the public that city ordinance 452.16 bans parking on public streets when snowfall exceeds two inches in depth, and that ordinance 660.05 requires residents to keep their sidewalks free of snow, ice, and any nuisance. And I would also add that over the weekend during our winter storm, we did have two crews in, each working 14-hour shifts, and they did a rather good job, I think, this time around, addressing snow removal during the storm. And we're happy for the work that they do. So if there's any question or comment about service or about Mr. Pecorni's report- So, if there's any question or comment about service or about Mr. Corney's report, I will attempt to answer it now if there's anything. Otherwise, that would conclude the service department report. Next is Building Commissioner, Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I wanted to take this opportunity to bring council up to date. The two-family house located at the corner of Tullamore and Brockway, the address is 2223 Brockway of 3633 Tullamore. You may recall that this suffered a fire late last September, and shortly after that, council declared a nuisance. I had been in contact at that time with the owner of record, and I met him at the property. At the time I met him, he was in the company of a fire restoration contractor, and he told me he was getting estimates to have the house fixed up. Would he have permission to have the tenants unload their belongings from there? And I gave that permission. Approximately two weeks after that meeting, this was November 16th, I called him, asked him what was going on, and he said that he had talked to three or four different contractors, and they were looking to come into the building department to find out what we require. Now, at this point, I had not been invited into the property, and I found this kind of unusual. Needless to say, approximately a week or two after this, approximately a week after this, I ran into somebody at the property who was unloading furniture and identified himself as the new owner. And I said, "Well, this can't be. In our city, we require point-of-sale inspection before that property can transfer title, and according to the county, we still have this original owner as the owner of record." So now, the situation got dark, a little murky. Shortly after this, I ran into somebody there at the property also. These people are not contacting me, and I'm having to come upon them at the property. This guy works for a construction company. He said he was going to hire a crew to come in to clean out the property and secure, repair the holes in the roof. This is the third person now involved. He told me that he would have somebody there shortly after our meeting. In the week of December 19th, the first person I talked to said he was going to assume the property, said he was selling it. So, I got the name of now a third person. So, at this point, well, actually, at that point, this is in the middle of December, I started the paperwork. Up until this point, the owner of record had asked me to wait until after the holidays so that he could get his act together, so to speak, get his estimates. So, we issued the first notice on December 18th. That was up last Friday, which was January 18th. I have since given him a 15-day immediate notice with a promise that we will take him to court if he doesn't answer. Now, at this point, I'm kind of, I'm not confident that this person is willing to go ahead with the repairs. There's something going on with the sale, with the transfer of this property. We haven't been invited in yet for a point-of-sale, and we're going to have to get into that property. In the meantime, we're going to have this person in court. I expect in about two weeks, we'll be sending the paperwork over to court, and hopefully we'll get a timeline at that point, as to when these repairs will be made. Now, I did get into the house at the invite of the second person I met over there, who was moving furniture out, and I looked through it. Most of the damage is confined to the third floor. In my opinion, the house could be salvaged at this point, but it has not been secured completely. They have not secured the holes in the roof. They have not secured all the broken windows. So, I wanted to let you know where we are on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McReynolds.
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Cameron, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I'm concerned, you say the house, the roof line, et cetera, had the holes in the roof haven't been secured, and the last time that you would have seen or observed the damages would have been what date?
That would have been around December 20th.
Okay. So, we've had rainstorms, snowstorms, et cetera, and at this point, you've not been invited back to see what damages have escalated at this point?
Correct. And I would imagine the damage is continuing.
Right.
And it's kind of been worse than it was the first time it was signed.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And you say the first time you sent a notice was December 18th, and it was due to expire when?
January 18th.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's it.
Now, I should tell you that from my experience with these types of cases, you know, once I turn it over to the court, it becomes their issue. And usually, I tell people who contact me after that time that if there's nothing I can do, they have to appear. It's a little more difficult when somebody refuses to appear, and we have to issue a warrant when there's time involved. So, it could be a while before this situation is resolved, if the owner is reluctant to come forward, and that's what I feel that is happening here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I offer a few suggestions, Mr. Reynolds? Anything that we have to force the owner's hand, I would be in favor of. It seems to me that the designation, "I'm going to buy the house," or "I'm going to do work on the house," is a line you're getting because they want to say, "This guy told me I could take as many couches as I could carry." And if we can have the court rule that we can have, get an administrative order and go look at the house because we think it might be a danger, or if there's any way to shutter it, I would be in favor of that. It seems to me, this was the house that there was no insurance, right?
Correct.
Right. So, I seriously doubt that this guy has any intention to do anything to the house other than make a nickel here or a dime there.
Now, it's my understanding that he does have other assets, and so that's why we're pursuing it in this direction. But we could look into condemning the house, and we could also look into evading it at our expense and put a lien on the house for what we incur.
Well, so I'm not, I don't know whether it's condemnable, and I'd rather it not be condemned because it sounds like it was an operating house, but if we can do anything to take charge of the situation rather than just sort of send him a notice, it's kind of way, my position is, it seems to me like they've already designated this as them not cooperating or being honest with the city. Whenever we have to sort of put the hammer to them, I would be in favor of. So, I mean, I know you got, I know you got to control the situation, but this guy doesn't seem like he's going to.
And I also wanted to stress that we've tried to give him every benefit of the doubt. We've given him as much time as I think is reasonable, even beyond that. So, when we get to this point, I think that we have an excellent case of prosecution, and he's going to be hard-pressed to avoid this. We're still going to go ahead, the house is still in his name, house is not transferred, and legally, it couldn't.
Does our code allow us to at least shutter it so no one can go in and either pilfer it or squat or do something else?
The doors are secured, and the windows on the first floor are intact. It was the second floor and the third floor where most of the damage was. And he's taking care of the windows on the second floor that were accessible.
Has he secured the roof?
He hasn't secured the roof. Even if we had a tarp over, it would be better than what's there.
Right. So, maybe there's something the city can do that's not really expensive, just for the long view that if we can get the house to somebody who's going to take care of it. Once it goes through a winter or so with holes in the roof, I think it's going to be awfully hard to.
Absolutely. That's why I wanted to bring this to your attention now. I think now is the time to do something about it.
Right.
I have met him down this avenue before here, so I'm not sure what arsenals we have to draw upon.
We have discussed this matter in staff meetings and have talked about a variety of potential legal options. This seemed to be the option that made the most sense, to try to get this particular owner in front of the judge and, you know, see if she can persuade him to take some steps and, you know, as we all know, judges can be fairly persuasive. So, I don't want to leave council with the impression that we're just sort of tossing our hands up in the air. This is the first step. I think that initial notice had a 30-day time period on it, so we're past that already. And if we don't get any action in terms of failure to appear for a court hearing, then we will circle back and consider some more aggressive potential approaches.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. I don't want to give the impression that I think that the current administration is not up to the task. I just sort of having all these ideas sort of fire off my brain, and the last thing I want, anybody wants is for this house to be wasting away in the meantime, while this guy messes around. And it's personally offensive when people start messing around and giving you a line, you know? "I'm going to buy a house," isn't really a designation in the real estate market. I don't think that's, but anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. I'm sure you guys have it under control. Thank you, Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Anything, oh, Mr. Erdel.
Can we get a tarp on the roof? Can we do that? And that's a problem. It's just going to wreck the house.
Well, with your permission, I would contract it to a company and have them do it professionally. That would, I think, be the proper way to do it.
Just put a lien on them.
But you can sell a tarp, you know?
Yeah, but we're going to have to walk through some process to do that.
Even just put a tarp over?
Well, we don't own the property. Let's remember, we don't have a right of entry onto the property. You know, what we have is the right to enforce our codes, and the best way to do that is to cite the person to the court and to go talk to the judge about that. The judge, I'm confident, will be concerned about the condition of the home and what the owner is planning to do to meet our code, but we can't just enter onto the property and start doing work on it.
Yes, you're absolutely right. We have to go by law. The best way we want to do is so that when we do end up in front of the judge, that we're not challenged.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Are there any further questions, comments on this matter? Thank you, members of council. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Next report on the agenda is the city engineer, Mr. Chuni. I'll try not to cut you off this time.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick announcement for council to let them know about a pending East Val Gas Company project this year in University Heights. It's a large project. They would like to start sometime in February because it's going to take most of the year to get it done. The limits are almost your new logo here. It's from Fairmont to Hillbrook, and I think it's from Saybrook to Edgerton, and you can picture all those streets in between that kind of make up your new logo here. It's about four, almost four miles of gas line that'll be replaced by Dominion. So, it's going to be a long summer in those streets. And I don't know the exact starting time, and when I get that, I'll send it to everybody and give you all the street names and the limits.
Will they actually be going down Fairmont?
It's in the median on Fairmont, from what I understand, it's in Shaker Heights, that part. And then they're coming in, you know, Claridge Old there and around.
Could you coordinate the list of these streets with special projects and civic engagement with respect to the running races that are on the books for later this year?
Sure.
To make sure that the routes are not running through construction areas?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of it is going to be bored. It's not going to be open cut, but it's still a disruption. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Weiss.
Yeah, thank you. So, in terms of water main breaks, do you know how many are in the city right now? Because I noticed there's one on Green right now.
I do not know how many are in the city right now. Actually, we talked about it at staff meeting, and Mr. Corney just got an update from Cleveland Water, all the recent breaks, I think from the last past year, and anything that's going on now, he would know. Jeff would know that, yeah. And those are things, you know, this is a time of year when you get a lot of breaks. The freeze-thaw cycle, they pop, and you just have to wait your turn because Cleveland has to fix it, you know?
We can seek that from Mr. Corney and distribute that to council.
We report all those. I'm sure he knows. The police actually find them when they're driving around, and the police call them a lot.
Okay.
Mr. Rock.
Yes, I have a question about the gas lines. So, I've seen the water line replacements throughout the city, and I know how atrocious that is, but the gas line, is that any different than what we experienced with the water line?
Well, the gas lines are almost exclusively under the sidewalks, whereas the water lines in the road. So, the last big gas line we had was the one up on Green Road, you know, we got all new sidewalks there.
I remember seeing that, okay.
They do block a lane of traffic with their equipment, you know, and these are mostly side streets, but the digging and everything is usually in the sidewalk areas.
Sidewalks, so.
Now, they do have to cross the street at some point, so yes.
So, Dominion would replace the sidewalk?
Oh, yeah.
After the completion of the project? Does that involve like the aprons as well, or?
Generally not, but sometimes yes. I can't say, sometimes some of the services are in the apron in the drive areas, and they do have to replace them.
So.
But generally, it's just a sidewalk.
If a car can't access their driveway, then where are they parking on the street? What's the purpose?
I would think so, yes.
So, the reason I'm asking, because if so many streets are happening all at once, if you can't park on your own street, you can't park on the next street, let's just say, because of construction vehicles, and we're talking like a dozen streets side by side, are they doing this, are they sequencing these like one street at a time?
When I get that schedule, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Absolutely, though, yeah. And again, most of this will be bored, so they'll have these pits, and then they're going to bore in between. So, it's not going to be all open cut. So, a lot of the driveways will not be affected.
Got it.
Very good. Any further questions for Mr. Chuni? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next, communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Good evening. Prior to tonight's city council meeting, we held a citizens committee of the Parks and Rec Committee, came up with some ideas that we're going to be looking at in the future, perhaps next winter. We'll be exploring the possibility of a skating rink, temporary skating rink, either with traditional ice or with synthetic ice. So, we'll be taking a look at that and figure out the costs and how the logistics that would work, and if it's something that we're all willing to pursue. We're sign up and forward to next winter. Looking ahead to the summer, I was brought up the possibility of a sprinkler park similar to the one they have in Lynnhurst, so we'll take a good look at that. And again, the cost and the logistics, and that's something that, but to provide to residents, we can do that. We threw around some other ideas, most notably expanded use of the new community park. I think everyone's on the same page where it's a very nice park we have, but it could be utilized more, and so we're looking at ways to do that, and we'll be rolling those out, and I think the mayor's going to be bringing up a couple of ideas in the upcoming State of the City speech. Speaking of the State of the City, my plan is to have the city website redesigned by February 13th. And right now, I'm just putting the official touches on it with Mark Aiman. I'm going to run it all by the mayor, then I'm going to get it to department heads and obviously council members, just to make sure everyone, you know, likes what we're doing. Again, for the most part, it's a cosmetic change. We're going to be adding some features, you know, rolling those out slowly, but right now, I just want to make sure that we have the cosmetic changes done by the 13th. So, we'll be looking forward, probably talk about it at the next council meeting, but also email you if we have, you know, a draft by before then. Let's see, also, working on project with Susan Drucker. As you know, every year, Cleveland Magazine comes out with their Best of the East Side issue, and Future Heights, through the Heights Observer, does something similar. Channel 8 will be doing something in the future, and Cleveland.com occasionally does one, as does Scene Magazine. So, what we want to do is promote our local businesses. We all know, you know, we have a lot of great businesses in town, and we want to campaign for them a little bit, try to, you know, help get them the votes to push them over to the edge and win the, most likely, the thing we're concentrating on most is the Heights Observer contest. So, I'm working with Susan on that. We did a bunch of business visits today, promoting that on social media, and it's a good thing for businesses, because again, if they win that award, you know, it gets them some free press, which also, you know, gets more people coming in their doors. So, that's, it's good for them, it's good for the city. Because I think, not to speak for Susan, I know she'll add a little bit to this in her reports, but I think the goal is, we want local businesses to know that, hey, they have a friend in city hall administration and council, and we have their back, and this isn't anything that they're being charged for. We're trying to, you know, promote them, you know, it's free press for them, free publicity for them, and it can only help them. I think it'll only help us in the future. And I think it only can help us in the future if, you know, if you're looking to relocate or start a new business in University Heights, you talk to a business owner who's already here, and say, "You know what? You know, the city looks out for you. They try to promote you through small businesses there, they, you know, try to get you to win these contests, and, you know, it, it's good for the business climate." And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cook? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Special projects, Ms. Mullin.
Last week, the city became a drop-off, a USO drop-off location for donations for members of the Coast Guard who were not being paid during the government shutdown. We've had a tremendous amount of response from residents in University Heights and also in the surrounding area because people want to help. And the USO has had to come three times to empty the box, and people are donating, you know, necessary household items, but also a lot of gift cards. We've had several hundred dollars' worth of gift cards. And we're gonna keep encouraging that by offering anyone this week who brings in a donation, University Heights, a look. So, everyone wants, seems to wanna help, so we're helping facilitate that.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Mullin?
Sounds great.
It really is.
Okay. Anything on the Memorial Day Parade?
Yes, we're working on that. We had our first meeting about two weeks ago. We have another one on the sixth, so it might be frigid, but we're thinking about the summer with that and the concert series.
All right. Very good. Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Next, economic development. Mrs. Drucker.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, I wanna start off with a, just a business note, just so everyone please be advised, that the Midas Service Station that's located on Cedar Road is temporarily closed for remodeling. They have not offered a date for when they'd be open, but just so you know, I just want people to be aware that they do have some signs posted, but you can't really read them until you pull in, and, and they still look occupied because they're plowing their driveway and everything, but right now, they're gonna be closed for some, some remodeling. As Mike mentioned, we have been working on another business promotion. When we did Small Business Saturday, that was a one-day event, and as we said, we wanted to grow on that so that we can keep promoting our small businesses, because to promote small businesses, that's not just once a year, that's every day. And so, we wanna keep encouraging people to think University Heights, shop locally. So, with this newest promotion, as you mentioned, Future Heights is advertising their Best of the Heights Awards for 2019, and that's, gives customers an opportunity to go and vote for your favorite business in University Heights. And they have a few different categories that you could choose from. So, what we wanted to do is, first, we, we were advertising, Mike created a, this, this sketch of what a promotional ad would look like for a business, and let's say you wanted to be, there's one like best vibe in University Heights, or best new restaurant, or best new bar, best new business, or, there's a couple other categories. So, the business can pick whatever category they want, and Mike will design a flyer, and, and then what we're doing is, we'll email that back to the business in a PDF, and they can print it off, send it to their customer base, getting, encouraging their customers to vote for them. So, what we're, and then we're also putting that on our social media to help promote these businesses, know that this vote is out there, because when Future Heights, when we read them, you know, and the voting's till February 15th, so when we read what the results are, you know, we wanna see University Heights businesses in that list. So, and, and we have to get the word out and to encourage people to go out and vote for our favorite businesses here. So, with that flyer, that's something, as Mike said, it is another free offering we're giving. All the businesses can participate. So, the ad says, if you wanna participate in this promotion, then contact the Economic Development Department, and then Mike and I will go out, as he mentioned today, we did some, several visits where then we, you know, Mike will take a picture, whether they want the owner in the picture, their product in the picture, something of their service, or even some just want their business sign, because it's, it's really their ad that we wanna help push for them. And then we'll put that on our social media, and then that's the flyer they'll use to hand out to their customers and to email out. So, people have been very responsive to that, the businesses that we've been to, and as we said, we also did that for the Cleveland Magazine, but their voting window was rather short, so that's why with Future Heights, we have a few weeks to go and push our businesses. And then finally, the last thing I'd like to bring to you, I've talked to you about a storefront improvement program. So, I am proposing the creation of a storefront improvement pilot program. The reason I wanna call it a pilot program is because I wanna give it one year to see, so we can, when I present to you, when you see what the application looks like, what the process would be, we wanna have that ability to kind of massage the program for the next year, to see how it, it really works, because on paper, it could, may sound great, but we wanna make sure that if, when a business comes forward and try, and applies for this program, we wanna make sure it's, it flows smoothly. So, the purpose of this program is to encourage property owners to improve the exterior and the physical appearance of their commercial buildings. And the program is designed to provide some financial assistance to the property owners to renovate their existing building storefronts. The project must upgrade the physical appearance, and it must boost curb appeal, because that's the value that the city receives as part of this project, that it's a value for the community, it's a value for the business districts, and it also builds on the city's current beautification and light mitigation efforts in the commercial districts. It also supports the city's master plan. One of the goals is to promote redevelopment, to encourage economic development and growth in existing commercial areas. Just to give you an idea what some of the eligibility criteria would be, projects obviously must be located in the city of University Heights. Only projects would be related to buildings that meet certain zoning requirements and are used solely for commercial purposes would be eligible, unless otherwise restricted by the terms of the program. Buildings located in our districts U6, U7, U8, and U9 are eligible, and funds cannot be used for new construction. Now, some of the things that would not be eligible for this program would include banks, savings and loans associations, gas and service stations, and home-based businesses. Improvements to buildings occupied or owned by national franchises or their franchisees are not eligible, and projects started prior to any approval of the application from council would not be eligible. Eligible projects would include things such as masonry, brick, pointing, cornices, exterior painting, window glazing, exterior facade, lighting, awnings, and signage, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. But the most important thing is that it has to boost that curb appeal. It has to, when, when you stand at the street, you have to be able to see the physical change in the building. And then with Luke's assistance, I will be presenting an ordinance to council, and hopefully next month, asking council to authorize me to administer the program. And then as part, not a part of the ordinance, but attached for your reference, will be a detailed explanation of the program, the process, and, and then what the application would look like. And as I said, we'd like to put that in practice, and then should some, a project come along, that gives us, if it's not a part of the actual ordinance, it gives us the ability to make changes if need be to the program. And then ultimately, as Luke and I were discussing, after we get through that first year and work through the kinks, then that's possibly something we can transfer to our CIC.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Are there any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Well, I'm excited. And I'm really looking forward to getting this going and getting this ordinance going and getting this pilot program going. And thank you.
And the key for next month would be with Luke's assistance. About that part, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community development and housing, this, housing and community development, this is Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, two updates for you. The first pertains to the Cedar Taylor Business District, kind of two sub, sub-elements here. The first is Susan Drucker and myself will be meeting with the Merchant Association in the coming weeks. They've been looking at some, you know, new elements to add to the business district. They were talking about that towards the end of last year, so we wanna just continue that dialogue with them, making sure that we're keeping open lines of communication and, and learning what fun, new, exciting things we're looking at introducing into the district in the, the coming year or two years. And, you know, also just looking to make sure we're part of those plans, that new development that might happen in the business district. And simultaneously with that, the NOACA TLCI Transportation for Livable, Livable Communities Initiative, that study is going on, looking at the Taylor Road corridor. Part of that goal of that plan is to make the district more friendly to bikes, to pedestrians, to all modes of transportation. So, recommendations will be coming as part of that plan, but in the meantime, keep your eyes and ears open for a public meeting that will be announced. We'll be sure to bring it to council. They are looking at having a public meeting again here in the next couple months to unveil some of the early ideas that they have for the Taylor Road corridor. And the, the second update is the Coroner House, 3950 Silsby, that's the city-owned lot that we have been asking the, the land bank for help to demolish. Their contractor is estimating that demolition will begin tomorrow. So, just wanna make sure you were aware that the house will be coming down. Like the fire chief had said, that had been a great opportunity for the fire department to be able to train a little bit in one of our houses here, and soon it will be down.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Are there any questions for Mr. Grogan Myers? All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. We will now move on to the reports from standing committees. Building Committee Chairman, Mr. Weisman.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Civic Information Chairwoman, Mrs. Cameron.
Yes. We are still trying to schedule a meeting for a motion, move to amend concept, and we still need to poll, I guess, council to find out their availability to attend meetings on that issue. Also, I would like to, maybe Civic Affairs can take on, along with maybe Mr. Cook, we could take on the idea that came up during, I think it was around the leaf pickup time and snow, leaf and snow transition, where we were discussing the possibility of the city maintaining lists of persons who'd be willing to go help neighbors with snow removal or leaf collection, or we wanted to create a list where a citizen could call in and be on the list, or be given a list of people who the city would approve of, or would in some way help encourage others.
This would be for volunteer assistance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We had talked about that briefly as an idea. I'm not sure we fleshed it out as to which way it would go, but I think it, it really bears, it sort of portends a lot for the city in terms of us helping one another, as well as giving some of our people who may be underemployed, or giving them an opportunity to make some money, some kind of way, or I think we had discussed that very briefly in emails back and forth. Okay. So, Mike and I will talk about that a little further and sort of see what we can do to flesh out a program, or in some way, maybe we can help some folks in our city.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Next is Finance, Mrs. Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance will meet January 31st, February 7th, and February 14th at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Annex, 2245 Warrensville Center Road, to work on the budget. We have a number of residents who have stepped forward and are interested in becoming members and joining the finance advisory. I'll be contacting them and talking with them. At this time, we have 10 finance committee advisory members, and we'll discuss whether we want to have a manageable number, or just throw it open to everyone. It is a public meeting, so, but we will have that discussion before we have the first meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy.
Mrs. Purdy, could you give me the February dates again?
February 7th and 14th. They are all Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Thursdays. Yes. Very good. Thank you. Governmental Affairs, Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a governmental affairs meeting probably almost a month ago, and working on an ordinance with the law director about changing the age to purchase tobacco products to 21. So, I would, I would say probably in the next month or so, we'll have that ordinance ready for first reading.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Next is Recreation, Mr. Erdl.
Yes, there was a Parks and Recs meeting just prior to this meeting, and there were a lot of good ideas kicked around that I look forward to working with you and trying to flesh those out.
Very good. I look forward to it too. Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Next is Safety, Mr. Rock.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Service and Utilities, Mr. Sims is not here. Does anybody have a report on his behalf this evening? Okay, seeing none. Committee the whole, Mrs. Purdy.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We've now reached the conclusion of our regular meeting agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. Would remind everyone once again that our next meeting is on February 4th, that's a Monday, and more importantly, that it will be at the Board of Education offices and their public meeting room. Board of Education offices are located at 2155 Miramar Boulevard. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mrs. Cameron. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.